Testing, testing, testing. Testing the audio, one, two, three.
I was gonna try another one.
Well, let me try, is your computer open?
Yeah.
Let me try that one, because sometimes I think it's my laptop too.
I have that laptop now too, so. I can just go in on my phone.
Or I can. Guys, I just don't know what we're gonna do if you have any of these issues with just being here. Am I seriously concerned?
Oh, it's fine.
I don't want to get stuck.
I always see my screen is black on this.
Oh, wait, here we go. Is it working?
Yeah, I can hear.
You can? Okay, then it must be my computer.
Hold on. Yeah, I can hear everything.
Testing, testing, testing.
It'll work.
Testing, testing, testing.
Okay.
Yeah, it's working.
I think it's a computer.
Alright. On your way?
Yeah.
We all heard that.
I heard that. We should check on like your computer though.
Testing, testing, testing audio, one, two, three.
I heard you.
Vice Chair Moore or JP, do you know if Chair Murphy will be joining us this evening?
And I'm sorry, I meant Vice Chair Lemus.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything. I wasn't informed by anyone that Chair Murphy wouldn't be here.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything either.
Alright, JP, if you would like, and Vice Chair Lemus if you'd like, since it is 6:00 PM, we can go ahead and start the meeting.
Okay, sure, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. So call the meeting to order this evening. Can we go ahead and have a roll call?
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Hancock.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Vice Chair Lemus.
Here.
And I will show Chair Murphy currently as absent.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes to the agenda this evening, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. At this point, excuse me, at this point we're asking for any oral or written communications. Staff, is there any written communications or oral communications for tonight?
No, there haven't been. I did receive one email from Eris Weaver, who I see is also attending tonight. And also Jenny Blaker sent me an email regarding some errors that are in the the current 2014 Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. But, well, I'll discuss that as we can move on to the matters at hand.
Okay, so the next item is matters at hand. It looks like we have a presentation for the VP MP update.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lemus. There we are. Hold on, let me make sure my view is not getting in the way of my slides. Can you move that a second? Okay, tonight we are kicking, officially kicking off the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan update. And also I want to, first I'll state that you're not only meeting tonight as the Planning Commission, really with this, tonight you'll be wearing your hat as the role, the role of a Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. All the jurisdictions in the county have various Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committees. As we assemble these plans, you are, were required to consult with the Advisory Committees regarding the content of the plans and, and the projects. So, so that's something that you're doing tonight. I think it's been some time since we have gathered as the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So for some of you, this will be the first meeting. Next slide, please. So I kind of just briefly wanted to tell you what I want to try to accomplish tonight. One is to go over kind of the planned purpose and goals, discuss our community engagement activities, both what we're doing and what's proposed. Go over what we are proposing to include in the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. Talk about the schedule and work plan going forward, and then obviously have a discussion, and then just talk about next steps. Next slide, please. So the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, or the VP MP, that I use for short in this presentation, is intended to be a comprehensive citywide plan that focuses on providing a safe, attractive, and accessible and integrated way for people to walk and bike around Khatani. Typically, you want to have your Bike and Pedestrian Master Plans updated every five years. Our last, just our previous master plans were in 2008 and 2014, so we're due. Part of the reason you want those to be updated is for, to maintain your eligibility for funding. There's several different grants out there and funding sources that allow us to go out and pursue money for projects for Bike and Pedestrian facilities, but often they will require that we have a current Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. So that's another part of the reason we want to do that. Also, part of a master plan, and we'll talk about this further, is the development of a project list. And that is kind of, you know, basically a capital improvement program type list focused on Bike and Pedestrian activities. And ours is getting stale and we need to update it, again, because versus a seven to eight-year-old plan that we're working with now. And then also, we want to make sure that our Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan stays current with other planning efforts. So since our plan was adopted in 2014, we have already adopted the General Plan, and there are some areas that we need to update our Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan to be consistent with the General Plan. We also adopted the Climate Action Plan, which has greenhouse goal, greenhouse gas reduction goals. There's the Countywide Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. There's the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which was just adopted by SCTA. And for example, the Caltrans District Four Bicycle Plan, which actually does include projects in Khatani, so. Next slide. So just broadly, these are kind of the goals that we are seeking to be part of the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. So when I talk about something like safety and comfort, that means developing low-stress bike and walkways that are accessible to everybody of different ages. That might include wayfinding, like you're seeing going in now, just to make people know where they're going. Connectivity is basically trying to establish a continuous network and integration between Bike and Pedestrian facilities. Identifying where there's barriers and seeking ways to get around those barriers or through those barriers safely. And another one is recreation and health. Clearly, the people are out walking and biking, it's a little bit better for your health than, say, driving in a car. Also, it kind of promotes quality of life, just makes quality of life better here in Khatani. One of Khatani's greatest advantages is it is a walkable town, and we want to keep capitalizing on that asset that we already have. By community, I'm talking about, this is where we get into equity and inclusivity and making sure that everybody has a means to get around, not only automobile drivers. This is also different programs that we participate in that have community involvement. Like, we've been attending the Farmer's Market, we do Bike to Work Day, so just other areas and programs where we engage with the community. And there's also awareness and education efforts, programs that come out of a Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan that relate to community. With respect to mode shift, this is basically about getting people out of their cars and encouraging them to walk and bike when they have that opportunity. It also might mean other emerging technologies such as other micro-mobility tools like, you know, these electric scooters and other bike share and things like that. And then accessibility, this is, relates to just making sure that we always have a well-maintained system that is usable, that is ADA compliant, and kind of follows like Complete Streets philosophy of not just building roads, but thinking of all the users as we grow our community. So these are just the broad goals, and then later on, we'll hone in, or, you know, kind of dig down into these and develop objectives and policies, how we want to kind of accomplish these broad overarching goals. Next slide. I will come back to this, but just briefly, I want to present this here right now that we're looking. As you can see, we're right here at the beginning of fall and starting in just a couple of days here with kicking it off. And then we expect that this process will take about a year to complete. And I've kind of broken it down into quarterly tasks and check-in points. Each of those asterisks, well, not each of the asterisks, but there's a meeting planned at each of those quarters where we can get together to discuss various items, and we'll discuss this a little more at the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. So first I want to talk about and get feedback, so take notes if you have things you want to say or suggestions. But part of developing a good master plan is going to be engaging with the community and the users of the sidewalks and the bike paths and the bike lanes and just how do people in Khatani feel about biking and walking in Khatani. So this is basically the, kind of, the plan that we have set out. There'll be a series of public Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee meetings, also Planning Commission meetings. Currently, we have five that are proposed, though those dates aren't set in stone, but we're looking at five of them. We have already started event tabling and pop-up events, so currently we've been at the Farmer's Market every week this month, and will continue until the market ends. And then there's other opportunities that come up. This is not an exhaustive list, but like, samples like Bike to Work, which is an image that you see off to the right, Khatani participates in the Bike to Work Day. We, if you go to our website that we have put together, or we have put together a website for the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan update. or we have put together a website for the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan update, on that website is an online interactive map. So you can literally click on the map and indicate where you want to see changes. I don't have a timeline right now. That map is part of another program that we're working on, which is the Local Roadway Safety Plan. And so we're piggybacking off of some of the efforts that we're doing there. I don't know how long that map is going to be available, so I do want to encourage people to use that map while they can. We are looking at possibly doing another map, an online interactive map, but they're not, they're, it's very expensive. And, you know, if you only get, let's say, ten to twenty people, you're gonna, you know, it's a lot of money per person just to get a little bit of feedback. So we're going to encourage people to use this while we have it available. We will probably put out a community survey, and that's, you know, questions like, what is good? What is bad about the biking and hiking, walking in Katari? Examples like, if you could fix one thing, what would it be? What, you know, what is the one thing that most people or that people would most like to see? Promotional materials, we already, we produced a flyer for tonight's meeting that was posted in various places and handed out at our table. Also, there's the marquee that we can use to advertise different meetings. And then also, we'll be reaching out to various stakeholders. S C B C of Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, very active, as I'm sure many of you know, with bicycle activities in this area. Their director, Eris Weaver, is a Katari resident. So very lucky to be able to have the opportunity to work with the Bicycle Coalition. Also, Thomas Page, for example, the police, and any other stakeholders that people think would be worth reaching out to to get their feedback on what should go into this plan. And then a discussion point for later is, am I missing anything? Are there areas where you'd like to see us add to this or increase? Or are there certain areas that you don't agree with? So this is a discussion point for later. Next slide, please. So the plan itself is composed of the following elements. One, initially, is there's going to be, we have to look at existing conditions. And I'll talk about each of these in a little more in-depth. When then, based on these existing conditions, develop our goals, objectives, and policies. Then through that, a needs and demand kind of analysis. Develop a list of projects and programs that will meet those needs and demands. And develop a user-friendly, graphically-rich summary document. And then coupled with that is the environmental documentation. At this stage, since we haven't developed the plan, we don't know what that documentation will look like. Could be exempt, it might require a more robust document. Next slide, please. And I'm going to try to break down each of these points. So existing conditions is just that, going out and looking at the conditions. I see Neil knows the spot. This is the bridge crossing over on Belparizo. It's great, gets you across the bridge, and then it dumps you right into the road. So this is the idea, this is an example of like a network gap or a barrier to travel. So we'll be looking at that, where are these existing throughout the city? Where can we improve our connectivity? Where, and then also, in addition to that, be looking at accident and moving violation data, which we are currently collecting now. Also, we'll be wondering where are the unsafe or uncomfortable conditions? And by uncomfortable, really what I'm talking about is levels of traffic stress. Bike and pedestrian planners talk about this because there's different levels of stress to different types of users. There are some people that are, that will feel completely fine on a high-speed roadway. They just get off to the side, they pedal like crazy. And then there's people like me that there's no way you're going to find me biking on the side of a heavily-used arterial-type road. So I need facilities that make it just a more inviting. And it turns out that that's where the majority of bikers are. They're in the area where they want safe and they want comfortable facilities. Some of these road bikers, it doesn't matter what you build, they would still get on the road and pedal with the traffic because that's where they can move the fastest. But that's not our, but that tends to be a very small percentage of the actual biking and walking population out there. Also, we'll be looking at safety needs, where are, you know, based on where these accidents are happening or where there's obvious areas where we can do some improvements. We'll try to identify those. And then, and then just consistency with other planning documents. Where are there conflicts? And where do we need to update our current plan to remain consistent with some of the other planning documents and efforts that are ongoing? Next slide, please. This is an example of some of the data that you can look at right now. If you go to our Local Roadway Safety Plan, we're highlighting areas, this is an image on the top left, or is just an image of that showing kind of the concentrations where we're running into pedestrian collisions. We also have that for bicycles. And like I said, that is being a current effort through our Local Roadway Safety Plan. The image on the lower right is, comes from the injury accident data that we're collecting through the Vision Zero effort. So this is a really good time to be working on the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan because there is this big effort to gather a lot of data that will really just help to inform the plan. And also, when we talk about projects and prioritizing projects, again, this data helps us to know where we want to do that. Next slide, please. After we've examined our existing conditions, we can then dive down into what our goals and objectives and policies should be. And that is essentially is what, what do we want the BM, the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan to achieve? This is what we should base our decisions on. A big effort of that will be to review and update the 2014 Goals, Objectives, and Policies. It's a good starting point, but I do know that some of them need to be updated. They have certain dates or percentages, you know, decreases in traffic accidents for something. So we'll want to look at those goals, objectives, and policies. And by that, here's an example, this is just an example of an objective and then a policy that would, that would come from it. This objective is to support facilities, which would, in this case, encourages the development of comprehensive support facilities for walking and biking. That might be one objective, then behind that, we'll have a series of policies. This example would be require short-term bicycle parking for retail, office, commercial, industrial uses. Then, once we have these policies, we can start working them into what we do on a more day-to-day basis as we review projects or pursue funding for infrastructure. Anyway. Next slide, please. And then out of, and then kind of coming out of our goals and objectives, we develop our needs and demands, which then leads directly into projects and programs. And these are largely projects rather than list individual projects. These are kind of the idea of what we, excuse me, what we would be looking for in projects. Well, one, we want to capitalize on the assets that we have. And we do have a good, beautiful downtown, and we do have the Laguna Trail. So good assets already that we want to capitalize on. We want to improve connections between the sidewalks and the bikeways and the different pathways. We want, like, this is an integrated system that we want to make sure we develop. We want to make sure our highly-traveled roadways are safe for crossing and, or just travel along that. And there's some various ideas how we can do that, through lighting, refuge islands, better crosswalks, signals, signage. Where there's opportunities where we can provide some connections by basically cutting through neighborhoods. And where, you know, right now, there's some street layouts that, now we can, we can find little areas around them where we can get a better connectivity. I'm thinking, for example, up off of, you know, connecting Water Road to Cypress as an, for example, where there's opportunities to do that. Where, and then we want to add, and not only add, but also upgrade bikeway types where feasible. So, you know, can we add a bike route or a bike lane? Or even maybe a separated bike lane to certain roadways? Is there opportunities for additional shared use paths? All these things. And then coupled with all of this, which will be part of developing the project list, is putting some sort of prioritization to the list as well as some ballpark costs for these projects. And next slide, please. And programs can lead to projects, but they're more like the efforts that we do to support the, to support biking and walking in the community. So for example, Bike Share and Way Finding, participating in the Safe Routes to School, Bike to Work Day, developing network maps, maybe having an active transportation materials and a webpage just to increase people's awareness. We maybe, we decide we want to increase our engagement with other stakeholders, such as the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, or develop our own, or rely on others also, but just develop certain design standards that we want to see with our Bike and Pedestrian facilities. And then just for discussion purposes, like what other things would you like to see the city doing as we start to grow, as we develop these programs lists? And again, we will be looking at this at another meeting as well, but I just want you to begin to think about these type of ideas. Next slide. So this is just talking about projects and programs. This is the existing list that we have, and it's kind of, yellowy-green is really the, these are already completed lists, what we've completed. So you can see that we have already knocked off quite a few projects. Some of them were low-hanging fruits, and some of the ones that are left are definitely more the challenge. We can continue to carry those forward. But this is the list that we have right now and why and what we need to update. Now, this is an idea of what it looks like. There's also additional information like, such as prioritization and cost. But this is, this is an example of maybe some of the, what projects would look like. Oh, and I want to make a note, Commissioners, that we tried to send this. I don't know if you received it, this or not. We were having, we're having a difficulty with our Minitrack in our system here. So some of this may not be updated onto the website. We will be distributing it out just as soon as we can get that system going. It's affecting the entire, basically the entire city right now. We're having, updating that information. So let's go to the next slide. Okay, now I want to, that's kind of the nuts and bolts of what will be going into the plan. This is the plan going forward. Essentially, it proposes to have quarterly meetings. Actually, why don't we go to the next slide and break those down a little more in-depth? So tonight, we're talking about community engagement, the components of the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, and then this schedule right here. I'm proposing that, and next time we get together, which will be the winter of 2022, we will be looking at what's coming out with the existing conditions analysis, reviewing goals, objectives, and policies, and kind of the needs and demands. And then this will lead into the items that we'll discuss in the third meeting in the spring, which will be to discuss the proposed projects and programs, basically the list. This is where we're going to sit here and talk about what do we want to try to achieve in terms of projects and programs. The fourth meeting will be looking at the draft of the document itself. Well, this will be where we pull it all together and will be the new 2022 Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. And then, and then following that, in the fall, we will pull the SEQA documentation together, take all the feedback we've gotten from all the various meetings from everybody, put it all together into the final document, and present that. Our goal is to present that in the fall of 2022. Next slide, please. So upcoming tasks, we want to continue with our community engagement. We'll be collecting all the accident data, working on the existing conditions report, developing the needs and demand analysis, and reviewing the goals, objectives, and policies. And next slide. Oh, and that's not only people that use sidewalks, as you can see here in Katari. Animals use them too. So just some broad discussion items, just to help get the discussion going. You know, what do you want, what plan to achieve? Is five a good number of meetings? Should we be having more or less? And then when we do have those meetings, would you prefer those to be dedicated just to the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan? So you're not, so you can, you feel like you can focus on those? Do you agree with the proposed plan contents? Is there anything that you would want to include in the updated plan? Oh, here's another one. If you could have any, to do any one project, what would it be? So anyway, with that, Lauren, can we see if there's one more slide? I don't think there is, I think that's it. Yeah, that's it. So with that, I'll close. We're available for questions, comments, discussion, but this is, there's no action tonight. We're just going to discuss and provide, take some public comment and then provide direction to staff. And with that, that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. So do we go to the public first before Commissioners?
If the Commission has no clarifying questions, I think it would be appropriate to take public comment.
Okay, so we'll ask the Commissioners first and see if any of the Commissioners have any clarifying questions for staff. Commissioner Moore, I think you were going to ask something.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'd like to hear the public comment and then have us maybe comment afterwards. Just because we're not taking action on this anyways.
Okay. Okay, is there public that wants to comment on this report?
Thank you, Vice Chair Leamis. Looking to our attendees tonight, please use a raised hand icon. And we'll start with Sherri Adams.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Great, thanks. So I am a Katari resident, and I ride a bicycle or walk somewhere probably just about every day. And so I just have a few general comments. First is, I want to say that I think Katari is a very Bike and Pedestrian-friendly community, and I think we should all be proud of this, staff, elected, and citizens, and also vigilant to maintain that. I think it's an important part of our quality of life. Something that doesn't get talked about that much is that culture is a key part of that Bike-Ped friendliness. So that civility between bikes and pets, and that's also civility between car drivers and bikes and pets. And we need to think about how to maintain that culture. Next comment is that we are a small city. Most trips will not be only within Katari. They'll be, they'll span from Katari to They'll be, they'll span from Kattati to neighboring city to outside of the city, which means it is crucial, our network is only as useful as where it connects us to. So if I cannot take the smart path to Santa Rosa or to Petaluma, that'd be like the 101 and in Roanoke Park or in halfway to Petaluma. So think about connectivity and regional connectivity is crucial to how, how much any of us can use bikes to go somewhere. A plan is about policies and not about the real nitty gritty of implementation, but no one, I'm sure, staff or citizens want to spend time on a plan we don't believe can be implemented. So I hope we'll hear a little bit and think a little bit about how to make some of the excellent policies that are already in place happen. So, for example, I noticed there's a policy that says that our signals will have functioning bicycle detection. Awesome. I know that to make that happen, you have to test it twice a year with a bicycle wheel because usually water gets into the cracks of the pavement. So it's hard to do these great ideas and inspire us and, and help us to believe that it can happen. And it with, I guess what that means is, is acknowledging the resources it takes to make these, these great policies happen. And let us know how to be on the informational list in terms of knowing when the, when these different meetings will happen. And keeping an eye on the clock. A final comment. I'm relatively new to Kattati. I have no specific reason to believe this is a problem at all, but just to state that anytime we have something like enforcing bike laws, you know, do you, do you have to have a light at night? You know, you're supposed to, but do you enforce that or not? Anytime you have something that's rarely enforced is a time when there can be questions in equity enforcement. So let's just always keep that on our radar screen. Again, this is not at all an accusation. I have no reason to believe there's been problems, but it's always a really important part of enforcement. Thank you. Thanks for your work.
Sure.
Harris Weaver, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. Harris Weaver. I'm the Executive Director of the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition and a Kattati resident and a former member of the Delarue Review Committee. I am so happy that the city is moving forward on doing this update. Most of the other jurisdictions in the county have very old plans and are way behind on getting them updated. So I'm very happy and proud that our little city is one of the few that's marking ahead right now, getting theirs updated. I'd like to add to JP's comments about reasons for updating the plan. Not just about getting funding, but also there are continually updates and changes to standards in bikeway design, in best practices, as well as changes in situations on the road. For example, when this last plan was updated, SMART wasn't running yet, and it is now, right? So how does that change transportation patterns? So there's lots of reasons for, for getting a plan updated. I want to mention a couple of times, staff use the word accidents. And a lot of us in the traffic safety world are trying to purge that word from our vocabularies and use crashes or collisions instead. Because the word accident implies that, oh, it couldn't be helped. It was just an accident. When most collisions and crashes are the result of bad decisions, poor roadway design, or, or they could have been prevented. Which is what the whole Vision Zero concept is about, that all of the jurisdictions I'm working on together, that we can prevent collisions and, and fatalities and, and things if we make the decision and the commitment to do so. One comment I had, so I've been reading through the old plan and going through all my things and I will be meeting with staff and happy to do everything that I can do to help get this, this plan done. JP mentioned, mentions traffic stress. And one of the things I noticed in the previous plan was that all of the bike counts were done at intersections that have a high degree of traffic stress. For example, I bicycle every day in Kattati and I never ride through that, those particular intersections. So you wouldn't count me. So that's something I will want to look at is where we actually do bike counts in a way that gives us more reasonable data. And finally, one of the things that I have noticed with some of the other jurisdictions that I work with is I don't know all of you on the commission or how much all of you bicycle other than, other than Neil. But I would be happy to put together a ride and to ride to look specifically at the places in the city that are working well and the places where there are challenges that really need to be fixed. Because I've done that with the SMART Board of Directors on their bike path and some other jurisdictions. And it's a lot easier to make decisions about something when you're actually looking at it, you know, from a bike or on foot versus driving by if that's your usual mode of transportation. Thank you.
Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
Hello, thank you. Like the previous two speakers, I walk and bicycle around Kattati a lot. I think this is a fabulous start to the, the update. Thank you very much. It seems very thorough. And some of the things that I had been hoping would be included have been included, like talking about complete streets and talking about other kinds of mobility apart from bicycles and pedestrians. So I think this looks very promising. I really like the interactive mapping tool online and I hope, I hope a lot of people know about that and can put in their, their comments there about places where there are gaps and needs for improvement. And I agreed with the first speaker who talked about the necessity of, what's the word, segueing, I guess, with other surrounding communities. Because, for example, on East Kattati Avenue, for the most part, the bike lane in Kattati is in great condition and well maintained. And then you cross over into Roanoke Park and it's full of ruts and gravel and it's very difficult to negotiate safely without having to go out into the traffic. And on the west side, there are some fabulous bike trails and potential bike trails alongside the creeks just outside the Kattati's official boundary. Kind of in, I think it's in the unincorporated area of Kattati, of the county, or it may be within the urban growth boundary for Kattati. I'm not quite sure. But I'm wondering what influence, if any, the city of Kattati can have on these surrounding areas. I think those are my main questions and comments so far, but I will email in any thoughts I have. And thank you very much for the opportunity to comment. I'm excited about this project. Thank you.
Vice Chair Leamis, that will end a public comment.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So now, at this time, we'll go to any questions or comments by commissioners, any commissioners? I see Commissioner Hancock.
Yes, hello. Thank you JP for a, a good update and very comprehensive. I'm, I'm just sort of wondering if you can, with the, the start of the plan, also review the documents for accuracy. I know that there's some of the, one of the creek names out by Helman Lane doesn't appear to be on it. So if we are going to have any discussion, it would be good to have a name on that. I think, I think it's Old Washoe Creek, but that would need some sort of checking. I'm, I'm also wondering on the needs and demands analysis, whether or not you're planning on sort of looking at the policies where the policies specify something and seeing whether or not it's actually been useful. Particularly, I'm looking at Policy 5.1, where it says participate in the development and maintenance of a bicycle and pedestrian safety campaign as a countywide tool, which is really excellent. So I wonder if we can have any, has that happened in the last five years? Or the last, last period? And maybe if not, what would it take for some of that to happen for the future? So that's sort of like, that how much is, how much of it's actually been used? And to be honest here, I'm sort of saying, I think we might need to have a, a budget in that so that we can actually perhaps have more of that safety campaigns that can involve children and perhaps, I'm just saying perhaps, maybe involve the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition on that. So I think that applies 5.1, 5.4, and there were a number of other ones in there. There's also some policies that sort of say there should be a review every year. And I'm not too sure that's happened, but maybe that would be good, again, to check it out, to say, has the city actually performed some of these analyses? And maybe report back on it once we get into, to next time. But otherwise, good to, good to have a kickoff. I think we have had a good set of, of cycling through the plans and getting the real hard stuff done like I remember before the SMART train went in. That junction was really, really bad. So that's sort of been improved. And it will be nice just to, now with, with these, to dig into them a little bit more. Really appreciate Harris Weaver of Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition coming in with the, the ideas and particularly traffic stress. I know that's a sort of one that's been mentioned and it's just how do we, as we look at the needs and demands, maybe how do we analyze that for residents? It's a really challenging one. But maybe the, we need to identify just, does there have to be a more of a, a checking in with people sometime? You know, how, how do you check people's level of stress with the traffic? Where would they go on the roads? And finally, I'm just wondering for the next iteration, once we're out there, could we maybe have a copy of the Caltrans map? That gives us an idea. I did bring it up and it's not that, you mentioned it. It's not that big, but it actually indicates how do we connect in with our region. And also the SCTA has a version of that. So we, we have our map, we have some overlays on the streets, we have what SCTA is trying to do. And then we also have the bigger picture of what Caltrans. And of course, you know, there's the sister city connections with Roanoke Park. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else that commissioner want to comment on this or questions? Commissioner Moore?
Yes, hi. I, I just had a couple of comments on for outreach for different demographics in our, in our, in our city. I think a lot of people who have small children walk in Kattati. So I think we should maybe target some of the preschools for outreach. Also, some of the, on the other side, some of the mobile home parks in Charles Street Village, where you're targeting some of the, the older folks in our, in our, in our town. So I think if we're doing outreach, we need to really be comprehensive with, with people that walk and also use their bikes. But I think those are, those are just simple things that I saw that, that didn't want showing up in our outreach. Also, Thomas Page used to do a safety rodeo years and years ago when my kids were there with, with bicycles. And we did it with the police department. So that might be something that we incorporate into into this, this plan as a, as a safety outreach, maybe once a year or, or, I mean, we could coordinate with Thomas Page. Another thing I, is that we're getting electric bikes at the SMART train. So I think that needs to be incorporated into this. And and I'd like to see the focus of the maintenance of the current paths. And especially around the bridges. I walk quite a bit on the Langood Street Bridge. And it's starting to fail a little bit on its, with lifting up. So I think those safety issues need to be just addressed on, on all of the current bike paths and, and connectivity that we have with them. So those are my only comments and I look forward to, to jumping back in on this. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rodriguez, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I just, I have a couple of comments. I like what Sherri Adams said about making sure that these goals are achievable. And not promising too much of things that we might want to do but aren't able to complete. And I would also like be more surveys, maybe, I don't know if you get any data from the SMART, SMART? See how many people actually use, take their bike to work? I read in the, the packet that more people are working in Sonoma County that have, rather than commuting to work now. So that would be good to know more about that. Maybe more outreach in schools, slires, maybe a survey of how many students bike to school. Definitely looking at existing conditions. For example, getting off the freeway, coming south and turning right onto Kattati Avenue. On one, on your right hand side, there is no sidewalk, but I see a lot of people walking there on the bike lane. And then on the other side, there is a sidewalk. So I don't know, would you rather have a a new sidewalk put there or just have the bike lane? Both? The road's kind of narrow, so I'm not sure if both would fit there. And more emphasis on safety, perhaps. Traffic signals, better lighting at intersections, especially the four-way intersection in front of Oliver. That's really busy there. And I don't think there's any streetlights on those corners, so it's kind of hard to see at night, people trying to cross. And that's all the comments I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez. I, I can't tell. I don't think Chairman Murphy made it to the meeting, right? So I'll go ahead and give my comments. First of all, I just want to share that I picked up my first adult bike this weekend. So I need to learn all the biking rules and everything. And I rode it home the half mile from Pub Cycle to my home. So like I said, I was a little nervous coming home, but I asked the person there for a little directions of what roads I can take. So I took the George Street back road back to East Kattati because I thought it was a little safer and easier. But I do have some comments. Some of the questions that I have is on server responses, like I know that the survey, we're going to be doing a survey, community survey. And I read somewhere that we have like maybe 8,000 population here in Kattati. So, you know, what are our estimated numbers that we're expecting to get responses? And then what type of surveying is it? Do you have a QR code that we can use? Is there a way that we could do incentives for surveys that maybe, maybe do a bike raffle or something where if, if people do the survey, they're entered into a raffle or, or something? Just something to encourage more people to participate in this? And a couple of questions that I had to is on tabling and outreach, is making sure that we also table at places that a lot of the community attends. I don't know about the possibility of table at Oliver's. It seemed like Oliver gets a lot of, a lot of traffic. And also just kind of reiterate some of what other people shared, which was about connectivity and safety. And as much kind of lines and, you know, building direction and, and for both pedestrians and bicycles for safety of everybody. So that's pretty much what I wanted to share today. And I'll, I'll turn it back over to staff.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Those are exactly the comments I was hoping to get today. A lot of it I'm going to, you know, take back and see how we can work it in there. I will comment on a couple things. Sherri Adams asked how to get on the info list. And if you go to Kattati, you go to the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan Update webpage, which if you just go to the front page and look at the headlines beneath, you'll see a link that will take you over to it. So it's right on, there's a link right from the front page. But on that, once you get to the Bike and Pedestrian Update page, there is an an area where you can sign up like an interest list. And we're already getting some signups for that. As well, I do, you can always come into the, to the office or call me up and I will add you to the list. And I'm also, whenever I'm tabling, will have interest lists. So we are trying to get the people to sign up to those lists so that we can keep them informed. So we are trying to get the people to sign up to those lists so that we can keep them informed. With respect to the Caltrans map, what I think what I'll do, Neil, is I will upload some of these other documents that I just kind of referenced, some of these other planning documents, where, where you can see how they might intersect with our Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. And then, Sylvia, I think your comments regarding the survey and tabling were both really good ideas. We did do a raffle, so that's not something that is foreign to us. And it's probably a good idea to get greater participation, so we can do that. I think all in all, there's really good comments. If there's something someone would like me to respond to or answer, please let me know. I'm just trying to... I think most of them came in as comments and food for thought for me. But if there's something that you want to respond to right away, please let me know, and I'll be happy to, to do that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This was a great presentation. And I'm looking forward to learning along with everybody as we develop this master plan. And the next item we have is reports by staff. Do we have any reports?
I'm happy to just give a brief department update. And thank you all for your patience in getting the Bike and Pede Master Plan going. We had identified it as a priority in our last fiscal year. COVID really derailed a lot of our efforts in the department, and so we know it's a priority, and we're committed to getting it accomplished. But also, please understand, it will be a very comprehensive effort. And we're conducting it in-house with a limited budget, although, Neil, I do appreciate that comment. And we will be seeking some additional budget for this in this fiscal year. And then, one of the benefits of the longer term is that we can prioritize some budget in the next fiscal year, as we get to kind of needing to finalize a document, get graphic presentations updated and professionally done. So there is opportunities for that, but I appreciate acknowledging that. And as you're all aware, we are beginning our Housing Element Update at the same time. And we propose or plan to bring the consultant contracts for that effort to the... The council on the 28th, they're all related to housing, as you all are aware. And there is very specific requirements for us to try to reach every facet of the community, including those who usually are challenging to reach and may not often participate in kind of our governmental processes. And so, one of my plans, and I've been discussing this with JP, is to try to leverage not only just what we learned from that, but then also some of the resources that those folks provide us to also get some additional input into the bicycle pedestrian process. And so just know, we're going to be looking for economies of scale and opportunities at every turn to really get as much participation and feedback as we can, both in the Housing Element Update, which is critical, and it's going to decide how we build housing over the next eight years, but then also for the Bike and Pede effort, to make sure that as those folks move into town or the folks who are living in town can continue to get around on their bikes and walking, because it's one of the main benefits, or one of the, one of the many benefits of being a Katati resident. And as you're all aware, and you've all responded to my email, I believe that we plan on kicking off that effort formally on October 12th. It's not 100% confirmed yet, but that is the date we're identifying for a joint City Council Planning Commission meeting to formally kick off the Housing Element Update. And so just please continue to hold that date. You all have been very prompt in response, in your responses to us. And I know City Manager's Office is working on getting that scheduled with the council. Other than that, we continue to see a lot of interest in housing projects, but also developers continuing to kind of struggle to connect all the dots between the cost of construction and their ability to be financially feasible. But we're looking or hoping to be able to try to bridge some of those gaps through this Housing Element Update, and look for opportunities where we can do things to help support the development of housing for the community. And along those lines, we have launched a housing website. And it's currently under works, but there's a lot of housing resources there, including formal ways for folks to apply for our affordable housing opportunities. And so just to let everyone know, there are five units on Jamie Lane that are available as moderate single-family homes for ownership. Are, they're accepting applications up to the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County, as well as the seven units up at Cessing. Those are all being advertised right now for availability. They're for sale, homes, single-family primarily, or duet-style homes that are available for a variety of income levels. And I would just encourage everyone to go to the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County website and apply. They can Google that or go through our website. And we'll continue to add information to that as it becomes available. And just know that the state legislature continues to pass new bills related to housing. SB 9 is one that is worth a Google search and a little bit of updates. But it affects single-family homes, and you might have seen the headlines. It allows all single-family lots essentially in the state to be split. And then basically, two homes built on each of those lots. So never a dull moment in the world of housing. And we will be bringing some additional housing elements, housing regulations or ordinances in response to those changes. The last thing I'll leave you with is, we are presenting the Objective Design Guidelines to the City Council for a first reading of the ordinance, also at the September 28th meeting. And so all your work is kind of culminating in hopefully a first reading of an ordinance and get those in place with the City Council. So I really appreciate you all putting in the hard work to get that there. And the council really appreciated all the work as well, and I think it'll be adopted in the relatively near term. With that, I don't have anything else to add, but I'm available for any questions.
I do have a question. At what time, the special meeting on October 12th, what time would that be at?
We haven't said it yet. It will either be at 5:00 or 6:00. I think some folks responded that 6:00 worked for them, and so it's going to be my goal to push for that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
Got a question on that. So just wanted to ask about one of the ideas that came up on that design, Objective Design Guidelines, that I think has been getting some thinking on it. And it's basically this idea that was put in there that streets could be safe as a backyard. Or what was, I think, being termed, there was this introduction of a term of a Winif. But, and I've, I've kicked off a whole bunch of research on looking at it and talking to some other people around the area. And it, it just, the question is, is that is there a, is there a way really with, if, if somebody is doing a small housing units where they have an internal street? Alcatha has put something out where they're defining a simple, "safe as your backyard" street, the Winif concept, as being something that is marking that you're entering it, having some curves and then some street furniture. So I'm just wondering if there's any, any thinking about what would happen on the internal streets for any, any project that could, it sort of aligns with the idea of safety and Project Zero. But is there anything going on in that area where you're incorporating that perhaps in the, in the new ordinance?
The Winif concept did stay in the Objective Design Guidelines. The council, the council raised similar concerns to what you brought up, and also concerns over maybe a developer using their parking area as their, their primary open space and then kind of not having to provide real functional open space or another type of usable open space. And so the council voiced that concern. We've tried to respond to that. It did remain as an option, as one method for the open space requirement, but it cannot satisfy all of the open space requirements. So that's how we're proposing to the City Council. And there are design specifics with, which include traffic calming, a variety of kind of pedestrians serving the infrastructure. And the idea is that kind of, you know, it's, it's bikes equals cars equals pedestrians. So everyone's treated equally in those areas. And there obviously has to be some safety thought to it, and it is internal. It would not be some, some primary area. And, and what did come out of the council discussion is that the actual parking space itself cannot count towards that area. It has to be kind of the circulation elements. And one of the examples I use is just like, you know, I've seen these, these developments where the alleyways are very heavily used by kids and adults in alley-loaded rear garage developments, which we really pushed because it's a natural meeting place for all these people. And it's also out of the primarily circulation area for the project.
Yes, well, thank you. So, so I think the, I mean, I listened to that council meeting, and I didn't attend the Planning Commission with this was came up. So I listened to it afterwards. But I think the Winif as part of an open space is a, is the wrong concept, is an oxymoron. So that's just my, my input. Winif, you know, basically a street as safe as your backyard, which would be with the concept of a Winif, is more what I, I would hope that you could put in there. But anyway, that's just my, my sort of observation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions with staff? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next item. Any commissioners have any reports to give, everyone? Hey, I see none. Were there any items received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing further that I received, but I will check in with either JP or Noah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. So with that, I believe that we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Sylvia, for doing that commission.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Good night.